Well, hello everyone and thanks for joining us for another episode of Garden City Community Chat. This is episode number 511. It's Thursday, January 14th, 2021, and I am your host Kerry. Also joining me tonight, our favorite weatherman and co-host Doppler Tom Mywinski. Tom, how you doing?
I'm doing well, but you, you, I might not be the favorite weatherman after you hear my weather updates.
Oh, no, you'll always be our favorite weather guy. Hey, we were supposed to have Mr. Mike Jones in here, but he is having technical difficulties with his brand new laptop. So hopefully he'll get that straightened out and he'll be joining us next week. But we hope that you're all safe and doing well. I have a couple of program notes for you. Next week, we have rescheduled Dearborn Heights Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton to come and visit with us. She is also State Senator Alexander's Deputy Chief of Staff. And she'll also have some updates from Lansing for us as well. And then on January 28th, Garden City Mayor Randy Walker is going to be back. He'll be here with some news for the community and what's new. So get these on your calendar and we hope that you'll be able to join us as well for those dates. All right, tonight we are pleased to have with us another good friend to the show. Wayne County Commissioner representing the 12th District, Mr. Glenn Anderson will be joining us shortly with some county updates as well as the latest information regarding the COVID vaccines and vaccinations. So you're going to want to stick around for that, but first up Doppler Tom will be here with the latest weather forecast for us. And I'll be doing some announcements a little bit later and also have the COVID numbers for you. So grab your favorite beverage and join us for the next hour or so. We are live from Garden City, Michigan, so should be a good one. We want to thank all our listeners and followers of the show who tune in every Thursday night, not only from our hometown here in Garden City, but several surrounding communities as well. We want you to know that your support is greatly appreciated. So please continue to watch, share and listen. And remember if your community has any events, announcements or cancellations that you'd like to get out to our listeners, just email the details to us at GCCommunityChat.com or you can message us on our Facebook page at facebook.com/GCChat. And we'll be more than happy to get that information out for you. Okay, we have a great show for you tonight and remember if you have any questions, comments or concerns for our guests, be sure to type them in the comment section. If you're watching us live on Facebook or you can text your questions to me at 734-788-9319 and we'll do our best to get them answered for you. All right, let's get Doppler Tom in here with the latest check of the weather and then we'll spend some time chatting with Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. So stand by. Okay, let's do a check on weather with Doppler Tom. Let's see what he has in store for the rest of this week and the weekend coming up. Tom, take it away. So there's some changes, huh, in the air?
There is definitely some changes in the air, but before we talk about the change, we got to talk about the last few days. It's been a fairly mild, relatively speaking here in Michigan. I mean, temperatures in the 40s the last two days. We had some sun as well. It's been a nice little change out there in the last few weeks with all the clouds and what have you, but yes, all that is now a distant memory because I don't think we're going to see any more 40s. I don't think we're going to see much sun and the foreseeable future as well. It's going to start clouding up and cooling down as well. But as we get into the rest of tonight, I definitely think the clouds will continue to thicken up and it will overall be more cloudy as we get into the overnight hours. And those temperatures are going to stay above freezing. So we're going to see temperatures probably in the mid 30s for overnight lows. And as we get into the pre-dawn hours, probably around 6:00 AM is when our next storm system begins to move into our neck of the region. Like I said, temperatures will be above freezing at that time. So I believe the precipitation will begin as rain as it begins to move in around 6:00 AM. Unfortunately, as this storm system continues to move through our region during the morning hours and into the afternoon hours, I do think that the types will begin to change and we're probably going to start cooling down in the upper portions of the atmosphere, which will bring it down even more into the lower portions of the atmosphere. And it will change over to some wet snow out there as we get into the late morning and into the afternoon hours. And then the storm system will move out during the evening hours. So unfortunately, that will bring obviously more implications of more wintry weather that we haven't really been dealing with honestly for quite some time. I mean, we've been doing a nice break here in Michigan for at least over a week at least here in Southeast Michigan at least. So it's been a nice, nice break from it, but unfortunately it will be coming back tomorrow morning and into the afternoon hours as some colder air up in the upper levels of the atmosphere begin to move down and will change our precept over to snow. It's called wet ball. Temperatures will begin to move down. Now, snow totals, obviously we're going to see temperatures cooling down, but we're not going to see them really drop. We'll be probably seeing them right around the freezing mark. So I don't think any major concerns for roads will be a major issue. It's just that snow will be falling and the amounts aren't going to really be a problem either. As of right now, I'm thinking probably less than an inch will be falling during the system. So nothing that we can't handle here, but again, we haven't really been dealing with snow for quite a while. So it's definitely a change in the air, but that's my current thinking right now as we get into the overnight and into tomorrow. And those temperatures will fall below freezing as we get into Friday night. So what's probably going to be happening is we're probably going to see that snow melt on the roadways and what have you. Probably a little bit of a dusty on the side roads and then it will all freeze during the overnight hours. So we'll definitely have to keep tuned on note of that if you're going to be out and about Friday evening and the overnight hours. And as we get into the weekend, I do see that, I do see that overall, it's going to be overall a cloudy weekend. I don't really see a lot of sunshine over the weekend. Saturday and Sunday temperatures will be above freezing again. So we'll see a little bit of melting again during the daytime hours and temperatures will probably be into the mid 30s. But I'm watching another system probably moving in on Sunday and into Sunday night, bringing a little bit of accumulation of snow again, probably as of right now, less than one inch moving through our neck of the woods. So no big storm systems to really worry about, but little, they call them short waves moving through our region, just bringing us some pockets of precip with minor accumulations of snow and rain. And that's kind of the, the calling card as we get into the weekend and into next week. I do see that temperatures as we get into next week and the rest of January steadily cooling down. As we get into next week, temperatures will probably be into the low to mid 30s for high temperatures and low temperatures will probably be into the 20s. And then as we get into the following week, the end of January, I do see the colder air continuing to migrate southward from the north. Temperatures, high temperatures will probably be in the 20s and lows will be in the teens. So just gradually bringing it down each week from Canada. And obviously we'll probably be seeing a lot more wintry precipitation than rains this precip out there as we get into the end of the month. But as of right now, I don't want to talk about that. Just two systems to really worry about is tomorrow and Sunday. And then a little bit of a break into next week, but I'll probably see a little bit of snow late next week as well. We'll talk about that then. That's too early to talk about, but other than that, next week, as I said, it's going to be a colder pattern out there. It will continue to be cloudy, even if we're not seeing the precipitation, which we're used to in Michigan. It's going to be cloudy skies here in Michigan and a little bit of snow late next week as well. But too early to talk about totals or what have you with that system. Expanding outward and quickly talking about some other weather, it's been a fairly active pattern all across the northern United States into the Pacific Northwest. This system that will be affecting us tomorrow has been moving through that neck of the woods with a whole bunch of wind. I mean, this system has a lot of forcing with it and bringing hurricane force winds across the northern United States and into the plains as well. And a lot of that forcing will miss us, but we'll get a little bit of it, like I said, with a little bit of precip tomorrow. But the good news is that it's not going to really materialize over us as a big storm system. So if you don't want snow, this is some good news because I don't really see the, a lot of accumulating snow to really talk about for the rest of the month of January. I mean, we'll see, like I said, a little bit of snow here and there each, each, every, every other day or what have you. But a big storm system, no, but just overall a gradual cooldown will continue to be kind of the story throughout the rest of January out there. But if you want to keep tuned to any of my local weather information, just go to my website, DopplerTomWeather.com and it will keep you updated as we get into the rest of January and into February as well, which is some of our busiest times, if you will, for winter storms. But as of right now, I think the rest of the month looks pretty good for us, besides some snow, a little bit of snow, but we can handle that, right? We're missing.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. Thank you, sir. Just enough to make it slick, a little slick. So just watch your driving a little bit. But yeah, you know, we really can't complain. We've really been above normal, really.
Yeah, this, especially this week with temperatures in the 40s the last few days. I mean, that's straight up spoiling us.
Right, exactly. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, just a quick reminder, our show streams live every Thursday evening at 8:00 PM. So we hope that you'll set aside some time to join us and be sure to invite your friends to join in as well. Also, if you go to our Facebook page, be sure to like the page, follow us. And that way you'll be reminded whenever our show is streaming live. You can also get more information and contact us as well by visiting our website at GCCommunityChat.com. I just want to mention a few people that are in there watching us tonight. Patty Fix is in there. Mrs. Chat's in there. How you doing? Jerry Thorne from Party Animal Travel says, hi Kerry and the gang. Mayor Randy Walker is in there. Hello, Mayor. Don Nicholson from the Marketplace Paper is in there. Nora Fix, hello. Kathy Ward, hello. Our next week's guest is in there, Dearborn Heights Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton. How are you? Matthew Corey and Dawn Corey, all the way from Florida are watching us tonight. How's the weather down there? What's the temperature? Yeah, rub it in.
They'll say it's cold.
Also Tina Wing is in there. Hi Tina, thanks for joining us. Appreciate it. And Sheila Swawinski, how you doing? Nice to see you as well. All right, let's introduce our guest for tonight. It's been a little while since he's visited us. He was a guest when we did our 500th show and I know we have all missed his coffee hours, that's for sure with the residents. Please welcome Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. How you doing, sir?
I'm great, considering everything we're all going through, but we've stayed healthy and I hope everyone else listening has also.
Awesome, awesome. I'm glad that you're all safe and doing well. So I mentioned the coffee hours that we missed for sure. Any idea when they may resume again? I see Maplewood is going to be opening, but I don't know if the coffee hours will be starting back up.
Yeah, we, we've got to take a look at that. I don't think it will for February, but possibly in March because we're trying to be cautious with the, the number of people and, and I guess we've got to get an all clear to, to have 25 or 30 people. Sometimes we get that many people. Garden City is always a good turnout.
Right, right. Hey, maybe instead of, you know, doing it there, we could do it live on here and work something out.
That might work. I, I think there's a lot of our seniors that, that do come to the coffee hours though, that may not have computers.
Right, right, exactly.
We might give it a try.
Yeah, see what happens. So you represent the 12th district, right? Which is, what does that entail?
All of Garden City, about three quarters of Westland and all of Inkster.
Okay, okay. Okay, before we get into the latest information regarding the COVID vaccines, why don't you go ahead and mention any county updates that you have for us like, and what's the 2021 road work schedule?
Well, the, there, there is some work scheduled around town. Unfortunately, not as much as I would like to see certainly, but there is a portion of Cherry Hill. Not, I wanted to, I've been trying for years to try to get from Merriman Road all the way to Inkster Road, which is where my district ends, but it also is the end. A lot of people don't know this, but at Inkster Road, it, it becomes part of Dearborn Heights. And actually, I believe it's at Dearborn Heights, that's where the line is and it becomes a city road at that point. So but same, same is true with some other roads. Vanoye Road, north of Warren Road is a city road, but south, south of Warren, all the way down, I believe, to the end of Vanoye is a county road. So to answer your question though, there's only the one section that they have indicated is, is bad enough. And I, I don't know their, I can't rely, can't say that I would rely on their measuring devices as to which are bad roads sometimes. Because I, I believe that entire stretch from Merriman Road East needs to be done. But right now it looks like it's from Inkster Road to Middle Belt is the section that they're going to do first. But I, I think they're probably going to do it in phases. I'm hoping by the next year they'll pick up some of the other parts of Cherry Hill. Really, really does need it.
Yeah, it's pretty rough.
And the two bridges and the section of Merriman Road, it's going to be done in phases because they have to replace both of those bridges. That's going to be done. I believe the last time I looked at it, they, they had that it will be done part of it this year and part of it next year.
Okay, okay. Is that, okay. Would, is that by Warren and Merriman and Warren, that, that bridge they're going to get done?
Yeah, north of, well, it'll actually be north of the street that's just south of the party store there next to DFCU. And it'll be from that point north up to just south of Ann Arbor Road, I believe it is, or Ann Arbor Trail rather.
That's a nice little stretch. That bridge is really bad there, real bad.
There's actually two bridges there. There's one that runs over the, the water and another one that's over Heinz Drive. And they're both in really bad shape.
Exactly, exactly. Mrs. Chat, Cheryl says she saw the amazing grocery donations that you did once again.
Yeah, Gail and I, I went on Saturday of last week and, and bought, I think a couple of cartloads or so of groceries at Kroger. I have to give Kroger another shout out. Kroger.
It's really been a big help, haven't they with you?
They have. And, and I think it all, it all stems from, you know, a rather unfortunate situation when they closed the Kroger in Garden City, which I was, you know, we were all so disappointed about. I have been able to get them to help with the other projects and including setting up the bus service or cutting, cutting the fares in half for our seniors in Garden City. And, and that's worked out real well. They put the first $500 towards that. And, and I think, I believe the city now is helping with it in this current budget year. And so it's great to see that. I was, we were raising money, having to scramble every year to get enough money to cover the cost of it. And it's really a good deal all the way around because the city doesn't, is not having to buy a bus, although that's what seniors originally wanted, but I understand the, it's not just a matter of buying a bus. You've got to pay a driver, you've got to have maintenance costs, you've got to have insurance.
Yeah, liability, yeah.
It just, it, it just compounds, the cost, the cost just adds up.
And it's got to be handicapped accessible, I would imagine.
Exactly. And, and so we have the service through Nankin Transit and they, and the mayor was supportive of it. The council has been to, to put that in place. And when we announced it, Kroger came out and gave us the first $500 towards it. And it's, it, you know, I think it's like $1,500 in it. By the time the seniors pay half of the cost of that fare and they get half for free, it, it makes a big difference to, to their budget every month.
Right, being on a fixed budget like that, that helps a lot. Yeah, big shout out to Kroger then for sure.
Yeah. And so they kicked in, I, I made a call to them back in, I believe it was late summer last year and asked the same contact person there and, and I said, would you be willing to help us stock some of our food banks, local food banks, and one in Garden City at the Maplewood Center? And they said, certainly. How would a donation of 5,000 be?
Oh my gosh.
So, so, and I, and I found, I've actually found it's more difficult to spend the money when you're just doing it in your spare time. And, and you know, to, so, so we're, we're going to really push hard to, to get it whenever there's decent weather that we can get it, get it around because we, I don't have a truck. And so, but I, I've got a couple of people in mind that I, that I might ask.
Call in a favor.
Yeah, North Brother donated a truck to use one time.
Gordon Chevrolet, they usually do.
Yeah, I'll have to ask them and, and, and so I'm sure we'll be able to get a larger load the next time around.
Correct, yeah. Well, that's awesome. You're also passing out masks too, right?
I do have those and anyone can get in touch with us at the office. We'll, right now I've been delivering them to our senior centers. And for anyone that might need one, I, when I delivered, we delivered the last load of food to the Garden City Food Bank. They said they have a couple of very large boxes and they, they are about a, about a hundred pound, 75 to 100 pound box of masks.
Wow.
They're, they're, they're about three foot high and, and about three foot square, two and a half square around the sides.
Another pickup truck needed.
Yeah. So they've got, they've got a couple of boxes of them and they're, they're giving them out also.
Oh, that's awesome. That's awesome. Did I see right? You've given over 4,000 or something like that already?
Yeah, I actually picked them up and, and got them to the senior centers in, in Inkster Senior Center, the Towers in Garden City, the Westland Taylor Towers, which senior population there. And then some of the other facilities that are all, you know, living places for our senior population too. Without, without any regard of who they are or whatever, I just want to make sure they're, they have that protection and help.
Very, very important for sure. All right. Well, let's move on Glenn to the vaccines. What's the latest there now for Wayne County? I know it's really been confusing, that's for sure.
Yeah, well, you know, one of the, we had a, on Tuesday, we had the person, these, I guess I don't want to call him the COVID czar for the county, but he's our strategist for dealing with health issues. And, and it really comes down to the fact that the, the county is not getting the supply that they had hoped to get. We could be doing a lot more if we had the supply.
Right.
And so far, we've, we've had, the county has requested 14,625 shots or vaccines by the vials. I think each vial will vaccinate multiple people. And out of, we've gotten just over half that amount from the state. The state then is having an issue getting them from the feds. They were holding back like half of the, of the doses that were available.
I think Governor Whitmer, didn't she ask for 100,000 or something?
She, she was, she did and, and she's actually asked, I believe she's asked to have the okay to buy directly, buy our allotment directly from Pfizer since Pfizer is right here in Michigan.
Right, right.
They make, they are making the vaccine in Kalamazoo area, Portage, I think, actually just outside of Kalamazoo, just, just to the west. And so she's trying to increase the, the numbers that they're getting. Wayne County is, as our, the other counties in the metro area are just not seeing the numbers of vaccine material. They're not, just not getting what they need to. But it, you know, just to give you an idea of, you know, right now the, we're, the county is still working on phase 1A. There's phase 1A, 1B, 1C.
Yeah.
And then phase two, phase two being anybody over 16 years old. But, and they prioritized critical healthcare and the all necessary healthcare workers. That's in phase 1A, long-term care staff and residents. And they're, they're about, I'm trying to see if I can find the numbers. They're, they're moving right along. I think they're going to be ready in another week or so to go into, to the 1B. But they're getting, they, they say, they think they'll get into 1B, which would be the remainder of the frontline essential workers, people 75 and older. And around the end, January 25th is what they're estimating. They, they're expecting to get into phase 1C, which would be 65 to 74 years old. And that would be probably about a month and a half later. So everybody just have to be patient, but one of the suggestions I was going to, to make for everyone, one of the things that did come out is that they have made, they've got partnerships with the healthcare systems, Beaumont, Detroit Medical Center, Henry Ford Health System, St. John's Ascension Health, St. St. Joseph and St. Mary's, that's part of Trinity Health System and Garden City Hospital. They all are in, in process right now of setting up their system to take reservations and it'll be by appointment. And it's also going to help relieve some of the backlog because they'll be getting money or they'll be getting their vaccines directly also. And, and then there's, it's going to be getting, the two of the major drugstore chains, CVS and Walgreens are going to be getting the Moderna vaccines.
I think Meyer was going to hop on board too.
Meyer, Meyer is, has already started a reservation.
Right, reservation.
That you can contact them and get on the list. And basically what I understand, they'll, there is a number that you can dial and it'll, it'll text you back. Or you can just call and call the local store and ask for the, you know, call the pharmacy and ask to be, that you wanted to be added and they'll send you a text message. Then you just reply the text message and it'll give you a, it'll give you a little form to fill out on, on your phone. And, and you'll be all set and they'll put you on, in the queue. So when the vaccine, when they have the vaccine on hand, they'll start notifying everyone.
Awesome.
So it, it's just a matter of it all kicking in. And really the feds didn't provide any, they provided the vaccines, but I don't think the process was really thought through about how to deliver the shots in the arms.
Yeah.
And that was, they're learning as they go along or as our director, our strategist with the county said, it's like building a sail when the boat's already going in the, in the water and that's sort of what it's like.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I know Garden City Hospital's done a great job doing the COVID tests over there.
They have. They've been fantastic. And, and so they, they're probably farther ahead than most of the others and that they've, they know how to, how to process people through and get them. and that they've they know how to how to process people through and get them get them through as quickly as possible. And and it's it's a ve- a very, very good system that they have. And I I think the other hospitals and the other one, Beaumont, I think, has been doing quite a bit. And Beaumont Beaumont, I think, is most they ask that seniors reach out to the hospitals if the ones that they have a past past experience with. I mean, if they're who their doctor recommends them, like if they've had any procedures done, any tests done in the past, whoever their doctor's office is affiliated with, that's the one they should contact. But Beaumont, I my understanding is Beaumont will process anyone for the vaccine. But it may be, who knows which will be the the quickest way to get the shot. But but, you know, I think one of the things that's worth mentioning too, that the doctor did mention, and it's been on TV, but sometimes they forget to mention it, is that the just because you have the vaccine and even once you get the second shot, which is three weeks later, you're not totally fail, it's not totally fail-proof, you know. The best of the vaccines, I think, are about 94, 95% effective. And and so people will still need to be careful and be cautious.
And mask up, yep, wash, they're still.
Yep.
They'll recommend that, yeah.
Yep, and and once, once a certain po- portion of the population, they're predicting around 70 to 80% of the population, if we hit that far.
Yeah.
They and when we do, that that will also increase the effectiveness that more or less people will have it and be able to spread it.
Yeah.
And one of the things I did want to mention too is, you know, it's not related to the vaccine itself, but some of the things that we've done and the county commission has approved that that ideas and and with the support of the administration, the different programs we've had. I know some of our local businesses in Garden City and Westland and Inxter in Garden City did especially well with some of the businesses that were able to get a small, small business grant program. And and also the we had before that even, there was a small business loan program, which was a very, very easy, good, great terms. I think it was like zero interest and or 1% or something like that. But anyway, something new that's coming along. Well, we had, let me back up, just before Christmas, there were there was funds left from the CARE dollars, the federal dollars. Funds left that we needed to to exhaust or spend, or otherwise it goes back to the feds. And we knew there was a need out there, so we came up with a an assistance, an employee assistance grant that the county did. They called it the Wayne County Cares Program. And there were, you know, I believe it was about 2,000 people received $500 gift cards. If they could, if they applied and they could prove with a W2 or with a their pay stubs, actually, that they they had been working, they lost working, you know, they were in the food service industry or entertainment, they could and they had lost income because of the restrictions on those type of facilities that they could apply for. And 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 there was, like I said, I believe it was about, geez, I'm trying to remember, 12, maybe it was 12, I believe it was 12,000 people received $500 gift cards.
Oh, wow.
And so just.
A little bit helps.
And and there's a new one coming out that the state is doing. And this one will and it was just and this is not CARE dollars, these are legislative-approved funds that that the governor was able to get through. And that'll provide employee assistant grants up to $1,650.
Oh, okay.
So and they'll have, application period starts tomorrow. And they will, I'd I'll try to post, I'll post this online on my Facebook page so people can see it. And it's a there's a website they can go to and apply. And and cutoff, though, is on the 25th, so it's only open for 10 days. It opens at nine in the morning and and this is a very similar program to what the county did. But it's such a much more substantial amount of money, 1,650 versus 500 that was earlier. So that's to help some of those folks get by.
That's awesome.
Tough time.
Yeah, it's a tough time, for sure.
It is.
Glenn, Sheila wants to know, do you know if that this vaccine is going to be done every year? We're going to need it every year, do you know?
I asked that question the other day, how long the effectiveness of of the shots are once you get the sex, that second shot. And the doctor said, from what they know right now, it's only probably going to be effective for one year. So it until they find some other way to some other vaccination or until they wipe it out.
Sort of be like the flu shot then.
Yeah, be like the flu shot, exactly.
There you go, yeah. They just don't have enough, you know, they just don't have enough yet to determine what, you know, effective yet.
Right, the 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 experience is just not there yet. And and I think there are so many factors that can, you know, per person. I mean, one person might have high antibodies already. Close them and and might last longer than a year. They just aren't certain yet. There's so many unknowns as 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 I'm sure everyone's heard with the reactions that people have and leftover symptoms that they have.
Oh, yeah, on point, yeah.
And, yeah, even even after they're pronounced that they're cured from it.
Yes.
It may be years before they get back to normal.
Terrible disease.
It is, it's 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 just and it it reacts differently with different people, it seems.
Yeah, it does, it does. So they've increased the population eligibility, we just need more more vaccines.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Oh, boy.
And and I I think you're going to see that open up because I I just heard today that Johnson &amp; Johnson is probably on the verge of getting an approval on a vaccine from them. I also read an article that the 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 one thing that people do have to, I I don't think our government is going to approve some of these vaccines that are coming from China and other places. They said the China vaccine is only 50% effective. And and I I think it would be a waste to even use something that's that's
Exactly.
This is that low.
I guess Johnson &amp; Johnson has one where it's a one shot instead of a two.
That may be in, I I didn't read all the details on it yet. But that that'll be a good, a great thing because then it doesn't cause the jam up of the system like it is right now. Because people that had their shot maybe early on, they're a lot of them are have already gone in for their second. But it it puts more of a strain on the supply when people go in for two shots.
Right, right.
And make it more difficult for people to get in.
Yeah. Kim Marquette says, if you could please post that information, the grand information, then they can share it and because so many Garden City restaurants are hurting.
I will.
Restaurants, but all all small businesses, really.
Okay.
Don Nicholson actually says it is posted on his page and the GCBA page, so there you go.
Okay.
And let's see. Cheryl says, hopefully, this could combine the different, they can combine the different flu viruses into one annual booster. Yeah, you never know.
That would be good.
Marty Jane says, it's only fair if we can't cross the Canadian border, their weather shouldn't be allowed to cross. No cold for us. That's good, Marty, I like that. Oh, boy. So Glenn, now, there's a website, right? What's a website that the residents can go to to get a lot of updated information?
You know, there there is. Let me, I know Wayne, it's, I believe it's WayneCounty.com.
Okay.
Forward slash forward slash COVID-19.
Okay, okay.
And and that should take them where they can get updates on a regular basis. They still don't have the posting of the daily infections or and deaths that I post on my Facebook page.
Yeah, I got those numbers, I'm going to read them.
Good, and I mean, it's not, it's not always good, but certainly it reminds people. My.
Uh-oh. We just lost Glenn. Reboot, Glenn. If he can reboot, we would appreciate it. Done. He must have dropped his wifi, I guess. Well, let me do while he's doing that, let me let me mention the numbers for Michigan. The total confirmed cases are 531,004. The total COVID deaths for Michigan so far, 13,672. Daily confirmed cases are 2,698. And our daily death count was 139. 107 were identified during vital records review. And I don't get that vital records review. I was talking with Mayor Walker and I don't get that. They need to be caught up on that by now, you would think. So, let's see. Garden City today, they had three cases. Here's Glenn, I think. There he is.
I lost you.
There you are. I think you just dropped your wifi or something, that's all. Oh, you're muted. Are you muted? We lost him again. Oh, Glenn. Technology, you gotta love it. All right, Garden City had three cases today. Their total cases so far is 1,107. They had zero deaths today. And their total deaths remain at 28. Dearborn Heights unfortunately had 21 cases today. They're at 4,003. And they had one death today. And their total deaths are at 107. Inxter had five cases today. They're at 1,037. They also had one death today, unfortunately, and their total death number is 44. And our neighbors in Westland had 13 cases today. They are up to 3,802 total cases, zero deaths today, and they remain at 161 total deaths. So that's the numbers, unfortunately, for the state and county. And Mayor Walker, I know, posts those every day, and so does Glenn, so you can always go on there and check them out for your community. Let me text Glenn and see. You, if he's coming on. Let's see, let me mention a few of these announcements that we have. The Garden City Figure Skating Club is having their monthly bottle fundraiser. It's happening Saturday, January 16th, between 1:00 and 2:00 PM at the Garden City Ice Arena. If you're unable to drop off at that time, the Garden City Library has stepped up and offered to be a drop-off site once again, so they appreciate your support. And also thanks to the Garden City Library for your support. If you have boys or girls ages four to six, they can learn to play soccer in an eight-week class. There's Glenn. All right, you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
I got you. All right, so where are we? That's okay.
I will, I I think I was. What's that again?
I think it was the website.
Yeah, the website for the county, it's just WayneCounty.com forward slash COVID-19. And you're gonna you'll get access to updates on, they're pretty much a daily basis or some change on the site. I've been sort of after, I'm trying to get them to make the updates more noticeable. So people aren't trying to figure out what's new and what's old.
Right, right, right.
They're making some changes in the the website, so hopefully it'll be a little more, a little easier for people to navigate.
Well, that makes sense, yeah. A little more user-friendly. So Glenn, before I let you go, in all your years as a public servant, I just have to ask you, have you ever seen anything like what's been happening over the past eight days? And what what possibly could happen up to the inauguration?
I know.
On that?
It is just so disturbing to see what's going on. That our our country seems to be pulling apart at the seams and
You know, you were a state rep and and a state senator and and you're very familiar with the Capitol in Lansing. I hear they're boarding up windows and and preparing for the worst.
Yeah, they're FBI and others have, they've been following some of the chatter that's going on with some of the groups. And there there seems to be a, you know, a coalescence of all of these, some of these extreme, very extreme groups that just want to do all the damage they can. And it's it's, I I just, I think back, back, just a few years back, when John Dingell decided he was going to step down.
Yeah.
Said, he said, it's just changing in such a negative way. And he was, and that was
Even back then.
Yeah, that was like six years ago or so when he stepped down.
And what can we do to 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 bring everybody together? I mean, we're so fractured now.
Yeah, and and I I don't know that, I've heard that question asked many times. And I I think there has to be some, at some point, a reckoning with, you know, to something to address those that are saying that the election was fraudulent, that was things that happened that shouldn't have. Well, there's always, there's never a perfect election.
Right.
And but to have people that are just accentuating that and and feeding that as a way to use it themselves is just, it's it's gotten to the point that it is going to be very difficult to get back to normal. There there I I I found many years ago that there are good people that are in public service.
You look across the aisle, I'm sure, with several of, you know.
Absolutely.
Your fellow legislators.
Yeah, and I
You have to.
It was a lot easier when I was in the House than I believe it even, that it even is now. And and I had, you you try to develop relationships. But one of the things that's happening, and I believe one of the things that will help is if if we could see it sweep across the country is to have, you know, redistricting done by part, nonpartisan or independent panels that do it. That's what we're going to be faced with this next year.
Right.
The new districts, they're going to be done this year and they'll be effective with next year's elections for legislators, for members of Congress. And 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 it's it's going to be done in such a way, I believe, that it'll have an impact. Because right now.
More of a level playing field then, that way?
Yeah, and 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 giving more of a fair shot at someone running for office. But also, I think it will have the the districts. And it was something that I proposed when I was there and it didn't get anywhere because no one wanted to give up that power to to determine what those district lines were going to be doing, done, how they were going to be drawn. But if if you have it in such a way that the instead of the extreme right and the extreme left of the two separate parties nominating the candidates that we wind up all being stuck with. And 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 I think that that makes it impossible for them to come together and work together. Because they're from polar opposites and they're afraid of being, having a primary election to take them out of office. And and but if you, I I truly believe that if the only goal you have is getting elected, that's not the right reason to be running for public office.
Exactly, exactly. I agree.
We should have a higher calling than that.
Oh, absolutely. And and, yeah, the, you know, the country always comes first and your state, you know what I'm saying?
Should, that's exactly what it should be.
Yeah. And the Constitution, you got to follow the Constitution.
Absolutely.
Well, Glenn, let's hope and pray that, you know, we don't see what we saw last Wednesday, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah, very sad, very sad.
Well, I really appreciate you taking the time to come on the show again tonight and share some great information with our listeners. And, you know, it's always a pleasure seeing and talking with you. And come back anytime and say hi to Gail.
All right, I will. And thank, thanks for doing this. It's a great service to the community.
Well, I appreciate that. We enjoy what we do.
Thank you.
All right, you take care.
Y'all, Cheryl, hi, bye-bye.
I will. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Night. Night. All right, Glenn Anderson, some great information and his thoughts on what's been going on over the last eight days, it's, it's a sad situation, that's for sure. All right, let's get back to our announcements that I was doing. If, I think I mentioned, no, I didn't finish the four and six-year-olds. If you want to learn how to play soccer, there's an eight-week class, it's going to start very soon. It's age-appropriate equipment they're going to give you, they're going to show you how to dribble, kicking, trap, trapping, throwing ends and all kinds of stuff. So they'll give you a size-three soccer ball to keep and bring to class. Just call the Parks and Recreation Office, seven three four, seven nine three, one eight eight two to sign your kid up today. Also, registration for the Garden City Parks and Recreation Adult Softball League, hey, they're talking softball, starts January nineteenth. Gather your team and play ball, call the Parks and Rec Office, once again, that number, seven three four, seven nine three, one eight eight two to sign up. And let's see what else we got. Oh, this is very important, the American Legion Post, three ninety-six, located at sixty-eight, sixty, Middle Belt Road in Garden City. They are doing a food box distribution. If you know a veteran, a senior or family in need of food, have them come to the post Friday, January fifteenth, that's tomorrow, at one P M. And they will load your car up with some food for you. And it's no contact. Also, the Home Pantry in Garden City, if you need a little extra help with food, they are offering prepackaged emergency food bags, which are available to anyone in need at the Maplewood Community Center on the Baumoral Street Side Parking Lot, Monday through Friday from nine A M. to one P M. Just pull in the lot and call seven three four, seven nine three, one eight five zero. Just let them know that you are in the parking lot for emergency food and they'll come out and load you up. And some of that food, I'm sure, has been donated from Commissioner Anderson, and we appreciate that. Also, Garden City Parks and Rec, Maplewood Community Center is going to be reopening Monday, January eighteenth. Their hours, Monday through Thursday, eight forty-five to nine P M., Friday, eight forty-five to eight P M., and Saturday, nine A M. to four P M. Now, I don't know if that's, you're going to have to call them probably, and unfortunately, I don't have the number. I would, wait, let's see, maybe I do. Oh, yeah, the number is seven three four, seven nine three, one eight seven zero. You'll have to call them to see what restrictions are in place, and I'm sure there will be some. Also, the Arthritis Foundation is having an exercise class offered at the Maplewood Senior Center, Tuesday and Thursday, one P M. to two P M. Classes start Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, and masks will be required in order to participate. A suggested donation of two dollars per class is recommended. For more information, you can call the Seniors Activities Office, seven three four, seven nine three, one eight seven zero. Maplewood Senior Center is located at three one seven three five Maplewood in Garden City. And that's all I have, oh, no, I got one more thing, if you all got your water bill finally in the mail, don't throw away this, this is the Garden City Buzz, it's in with your water bill every time you get it. Lot of good information on here. Garden City Parks and Rec is having a winter craft night, Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, from five thirty to six thirty at the Maplewood Community Center. Six dollars, limited to twelve crafters, registered by January twenty-fourth, and they're going to make mason jar globes. So that's kind of cool. You can call seven three four, seven nine three, one eight five zero to sign up. Let's see what else we got. Maplewood Community Center is also going to have drop-in pickleball. Yeah, I don't know if you've ever played pickleball, but I guess it's pretty popular now. Age fifty and up, learn to play for free every Tuesday, ten A M. to twelve noon, three dollars drop-in fee. Equipment is provided and will be regularly sanitized. Once again, Maplewood Center phone number, seven three four, seven nine three, one eight seven zero. So, yeah, hold on to your, don't throw it away, check it out, the Garden City Buzz, in with your water bill every time you get it. Okay, I think I covered everything there. Let's see, shout out to Douglas Carey, how are you? Thanks for watching, Denise Devoe, hi Denise, how are you? Thanks for joining us. Sherilyn Bauer, nice to see you. Let's see, Kim Marquette from the Straight Farmhouse is in there, thank you, Kim, for watching, appreciate it. Marty James, yeah, we're going to try and keep that weather in Canada. Appreciate that. All right, we had some good turnout tonight and good information with Commissioner Anderson, really appreciate it. Hey, have you ever considered coming on the show, be a guest? Or maybe you know someone who might be interested? If so, it's very easy, you can contact us through our website at GCCommunityChat.com. Just send us your email, name, email address and a brief message and we'll get back to you within twenty-four hours. Or you can just message us on Facebook. During this time, you can do the show remotely and safely from the comfort of your home or office, just like tonight. Maybe you own a business or belong to an organization, you'd like to share that information with us and the surrounding communities. If so, contact us today and we look forward to hearing from you. All right, and with that said, let's see, we're fifty-six minutes, almost an hour coming up. I can't think of anything else. I think I got everything here. The buzz, oh, also, don't forget the Marketplace Magazine. The January edition is out now, so they do a great job, lot of good information in there too. And with that said, I think we're ready to call this a podcast. Special thanks to Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. Had some great information tonight, if you would like to contact the commissioner, again, the number is three one three, two two four, eight eight five five. Or email him at district twenty, district twelve at WayneCounty.com. That's district twelve at WayneCounty.com. Also, thanks to my co-host, Doppler Tom Mywinski, great job as always. Mike Jones, get that computer fixed so you're joining us next week. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight and supporting us, it's very much appreciated. Remember, this show will be available right after we sign off tonight on Facebook dot com slash GC Chat. And then a little later on, it will be available on our YouTube channel at YouTube dot com slash Community Chat Show. Sure to click on the red subscribe button on our YouTube channel, we would really appreciate it. Check them out, especially if you tuned in late tonight, you're going to want to get all that information that we had tonight. And as we always do at the end of the show, we like to thank all of our healthcare workers, first responders, police and fire, everyone on the front lines who serve and protect us every day. We can't thank you enough, be safe, and we want you to know that you and your families earn our thoughts and prayers every day. And when you see any of these heroes, please let them know how much you appreciate them. All right, remember, the success of a community depends on the community. So please support your local businesses, but please support them safely, that means maintaining your distance and masking up, whatever it takes. They need that support now more than ever, support them when you can. And if you see something, say something, look out for one other out there. For all your weather information, be sure to head on over to DopplerTom'sWeather.com. He's got a great, user-friendly website. So we will see you right back here next Thursday, January twenty-first at eight P M. With our rescheduled guest, Dearborn Heights Treasurer, Lisa Hicks Clayton, formerly Dearborn Heights Councilwoman. She is also the Deputy Chief of Staff for State Senator Betty Jean Alexander. So until then, let me check, make sure we don't have any other comments in here. Thank you, Sherri, appreciate it, thank you, Kim, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it, all right, I guess we got it all. So until then, thanks for listening, stay safe, mask up, and good night.